Well, thank you so much. I can't thank you enough for spending an hour of your time, a very valuable time. To allow us to have a community to share with you the information about the two bond managers that you'll see on the ballot. My name is Brett Gabor, your new Vittifer's new manager. I started back in August and jumped into both feet. So I think it's been about now we're talking about the two bonds that are on the ballot. And afterwards, for those of you who are interested, our recreation director Lisa has offered to be able to tour the facility so they can see first hand some of the areas that need maintenance and upgrade. I wanted to just, at this point, introduce a few of our counselors who are here tonight. I can see, starting in the back, counselor Ronald Andrew. I also see counselor Mark Lassard, counselor Dylan Loadey, and over here, counselor Robert McCree. Oh, and president, Lane McAlton, and of course, our manager Brian Cottrell. We asked staff here today to answer any of your questions that you might have as we go through the presentation today. Please hold your questions to the end so that we can get you all that information and then we'll open it up for any questions that you may have. So to begin with, I'd like to invite up our director of finance, Jerry Comper, who's going to take us down and talk a little bit about the bonds and using bonds as money.
Want me to see if there was light in the stage that we could go on?
Welcome everyone. So what are bonds and liars? Municipal bonds are debt instruments that local county and state government should secure financials.
Sorry, can I hear you?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Municipal bonds are debt instruments that local county and state government should secure financials and specific improvements. These include, but not limited to, construction of highways, bridges, schools, civil separation, and public investments. They act like loan holders who kind of pressure. In exchange for moral funds, the bondholders repay interest on the principal balance being prepared by the insurance entity. General obligation bonds are backed by the issue of tax income. Most municipal powers rely on carbon taxes and other revenue streams to be the investment back. They are supported by the municipal powers generally. A general obligation bond is used by government to let users or issue to raise funds right away to cover their costs. These bonds have low interest rates and, unless it's your investments, not for stability, but from capital markets and foreign deposits. The two of these are tax exempt and no risks.
Is there anything to follow?
Yeah. My ear could come out to right in here. Sorry. Hard here.
It seems like you're a little hot. My name is Brett Chekkin. I'm your city engineer. Thanks for being here. So question one, the big one. Twenty million dollars to improve our CSO master plan, which is mandatory by the DEP. So I'm gonna go through the minutes and hours of that, but I have two seconds, but that's sometimes tricky. So we go to the next slide. So high level, what is a combined sewer? Hundreds of years ago, when they built Vittifer and other major cities on the east coast, they only put one pipe in the ground. Instead of having a separate storm pipe and separate sewer pipe, there's only one pipe in the ground where toilets go and where the storm water runs off roads when it rains. Most of the times, it's not a big deal, but that's what's inside of the overflow structure most of them. So this picture is, the structure is right before the river. During flood, when it's not raining, the pipe has adequate capacity, right? It's just conveying your shower and toilet. But when it rains, that pipe is only so big and raining is, you know, large volume of water. As these pipes were inside of the handle, it's large volumes of water. So what happens? You have all this water in one pipe, this manual raise, that water level raise still hits that premium point and ultimately discharges into the river. So long story short, combined sewer overflow is instead of this water backing up into your basin or into yards, it needs to go somewhere, so it goes out to the river. So when I asked me why 200 years ago they would put one pipe in the ground, I guess they weren't too worried about environment and, you know, cost of money, but. So we're kinda in this sticky spot now, we're trying to fix the past, so that's what a CSO is. This is not Vittifer's picture, it's an example online, but this is something we're trying to avoid having diluted sewage going to our rivers and our oceans. So some terms we've seen thrown around, I thought just to clarify what those are. What is a CSO master plan? So CSO master plan is something the city staff works with DEP for two to three years and essentially a plan of what projects we need to do over the next 10 years to clean our rivers and stop sewage going into our rivers. And then what is consent agreement? Consent agreement is the actual legal contract between the state of Maine and Vittifer. And it aligns specific deadlines the city needs to hit and monetary accounting is involved. So that's what those two are and we, the city signed consent agreement in July 2025, which is, we council approved. So sticking with Vittifer, again, Vittifer's not the only one that has these. There's 39 other communities in the state of Maine that have CSO master plans. But this is Vittifer's CSO master plan that over the next 10 years, these projects need to get done or we're gonna have to pay fines and who knows what else, but. A couple of these, you can see we've been chipping away at already. Alfred Street, we did last year. I'm sure you all know what's been happening on Allen Street this year. Happy to say we're two, three weeks away from that being wrapped up. It's been a successful project. But you can see there's a lot of projects, primarily in the downtown area, those are closest to the river. And then that's what DEP's told us we gotta do in the next 10 years. In a table format, this is what the cost estimates were from the city's private engineer, right, Pierce? So a private consultant came up with these, they helped create this whole master plan. And you can see it's, we're talking big dollars, thirty-eight million dollars. I think we're saving questions to the end. That a few of these we've already chipped away at, this bond won't be covering some of these, but long story short is, we're in the millions of dollars that we need to spend in order to meet DEP's requirements. Jeff and I, Public Works and, you know, city staff think we're able to build and design some of these in-house to help shave off, you know, hopefully millions of dollars. I am a professional engineer, I can design, and built this in my past life, and Jeff's team, we've built these products before, so. We can't do the crazy big ones, but some of these smaller ones, we definitely think we can do in-house and try to see if you guys can make fast money. Next slide. So I kinda, not to be dead or worse, but wanting CSO work in born. A, keep sewage out of our rivers or streams, which thus creates a safer, cleaner environment, reduces, changes any sewage water backing up where we don't want it to go. And then the thing most people don't realize is that most pipes in our roads are over 100 years old. We have tons of scary pictures of where your sewage go there. You can imagine a little pipe outside that by doing these projects or replacing old infrastructure all the way. So I think that's, that's the finances, good back there, so thank you.
If we were to borrow twenty million in bonds, principal, you would have estimated rate of interest, sorry, at four point five, which you receive from a bond council. The estimated interest would be about nine million and the total project would end up costing twenty-nine million dollars. The peak yearly would be one point two six million per year and the estimated no rate impact would be point two eight two six. What happens if voters never use a bond? The projects that are subject to funding that is spawned are outlined in the city's working agreement with Maine DEP and must be completed to avoid significant fines, which include thirty thousand dollars for violation and a hundred dollars each day that the work is not completed. If voters reject this bond initiative, the city projects will be fully funded out of the annual property taxes caused in baskets of the year.
Happy to facilitate any questions regarding the first bond related to the CSO.
Yeah, hi. Can the city get a bond without a food law? Is outstanding audits currently due for the city of Vittifer? Not sure if the city can actually execute and secure a bond without our docs or our pay working with our.
Our FY24 is currently underway. That should be done probably in December. Twenty-five will pick up in January, that will be done probably in March, and then we'll be officially caught with our audits.
Once we have those completed audits, we'll be able to reach out to the credit agency and get a bond rating. And from there, we'll be able to pursue the bonds.
So the four point eight percent, that could be eight percent. You don't know the rate, the interest rate until the audit's done, if they're done on time.
Correct. The four point five of it's on the slide here, distributed as projections based on calculations from the consultant, but we won't know for sure until, until we submit for that credit rating.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question.
Yep.
Can you explain what that middle interest rate impact means, like practically, for people who live in Vittifer?
Happy to speak to that. So the middle rate, similar to the way property taxes are calculated, you take that rate times by a thousand for every thousand of the value of your home. So that you would take that point two eight two six amount times whatever value your home would have a thousand. Makes sense? Did I do that right? Thank you.
So we're looking at like a rate increase for property taxes, correct?
Correct. This would be, this would be equivalent to that amount in your property taxes. So it would be added on top of your property taxes that are calculated.
Oh, I had another question. This was actually not about finances, but about the sewer project. What are the potential liabilities for environmental impacts due to the outdated sewer system?
I'll ask either Public Works Director, Dr. Mars, or.
What are the potential liabilities that the city would have if something were to happen catastrophically and affect the environment, if we go fix these problems with our sewer system?
So I guess that's actually twofold. The first one would be if we, if we're conscientious and we continue on the road that we agree to, if we have catastrophic failure, I would, I would almost guarantee the DEP will work with us. If we don't meet the schedule, they're not gonna work with us. It's easy as that. We won't be fined the thirty thousand dollars and that will be fine, all day, that we do not do the projects. Now, the 10 projects that are laying out, not saying that we can't put a project three, a new project two, the following year. They're not gonna have partner in the way that we lay these projects out, because that's, that's gonna be a good way for Craig and I and the staff to know where we're going, which project the city wants to jump into and which one we want to walk in there. I hope that answered your question.
Thank you.
Any other questions related to this bond measure?
Yes, so I just did a little back to the napkin now. If you only have a three hundred thousand dollar house that's valued at a hundred thousand dollars, you're paying about eighty-five dollars a year for this project.
Correct.
And I think, you know, again, just reiterating, if this bond measure doesn't pass, and we're not here to lobby you to go all the way around, we're really here to provide you with information. The information we want you to have is if this bond measure does not pass, we don't have a bond to really equalize across the 20 years. We will still have to do these projects and you'll see a spike in those middle rates as we identify which projects over, you know, however many millions of dollars we have to spend to do those projects. Those will be directly reflected as part of the middle rate calculations for that year. Gotcha.
Is there a potential that if the voters do not approve the bond, that then the city council might seek those funds elsewhere to avoid that penalty? So we may seek to take our other programs?
Very possible. I think all options are on the table. Obviously, a lot of these projects that we've been doing, we've been looking at various grants that we might be able to help with or so on and so forth. So there are opportunities to pursue, but given the current climate, grants especially are not, you know, they're not the only thing. So we'll have to find that money all the way around. Good question.
Hi, David. I have a list of N or 11 projects, one of the line items is zero. Sewer complete, so there's nine, which, this I guess is a question for an engineer and Jeff. Which projects do you think you can do in-house? It's helpful to have a sales spreadsheet up so we can see the cost of that.
Yep, for the biohazard and the equipment we have in hand today, we don't have the size excavator needed to do some of these projects, obviously. We're more of a maintenance, I would say, we're over burnt out maintenance group. We all love to tackle projects like this and see the end, results of the savings for the people of Vittifer. That's how I go, that's why we work here. I would tell you that number three, half of that might be something we would look at. Number two, Craig is working on now. We did all the test holes, I think you'll see forty-one square holes that were made in the pavement. We found all the utilities and now we have it on his desk. He was working with BH2M in the final design for that project. So we can get that out to bid, as we said, in March or April. I go, if we get it out the first of February, great time to be hitting the contractors up before they get their schedules filled in April, babe. So if we can hit them off around December, January, we can get it there full as a project that they're willing to take on. So number three is on that. What we look to do is Main Street Pump Station, we went out, we brought a few contractors. We like to try to find contractors that let us work with them in coherency. It's very important to find contractors that let us jump in. Like the Main Street Pump Station on the Sles, that's something that's 27 feet deep, ten foot diameter. So obviously, we don't have the sheet in, we don't have the safety equipment needed to put that infrastructure in. We can do all the installation of the control panels, the pumps, the rails, all the infrastructure that goes in the wow wow. So there's a big savings here for the city. I really can't tell you right now on the savings, but it's true. To me, it's a lot of money.
I'm sorry, is the Main Street Pump Station associated with this?
No, Main Street Pump Station is not. That's just a kind of a idea of how city staff can jump in and help with projects that we feel are how we're hoping to be successful at. Number four, I don't even wanna look at number four, I'm totally honest with you.
If you go to the drawing, essentially, you'll see like in the outskirts, there's a bunch of one block streets that would be a couple of catheters in with like a couple of linear feed pipe. Those are the ones that you can easily tackle in-house versus having contracts, third party engineer, third party contractor. So again, those are five, 10 years out, but those are the kind of ones that are easy to tackle.
I think it's also worth reiterating that that must succeed comprised of about forty million dollars worth of investments in your infrastructure. What we're asking for in this bond is twenty million dollars. If it doesn't cover the top of what we did, having the twenty billion dollars in a bond would just assist us to get to the finish line of certain.
And another point I'd like to just throw out there, yeah, we're asking for twenty, but we're not looking to draw up twenty million dollars tomorrow. We'll look at it in phases, as Craig said. If we feel the project comes in around three, three and a half million, we'd be looking to draw up the four million dollars and only have to pay on the amount that we brought in, so that's very important.
So the forty million that he had on the list with the nine or 10 different projects, is that the complete list? Because I do remember hearing eighty to a hundred million as a, as a potential total, total.
That's correct. As you, if anybody's seen the DEP slide that Craig and I did, I worked with DEP last week, it's early. She put a good slide together to say that Vittifer would probably still be in another consent agreement in ten years after this to see where we are and see if so. At all, we'll see how deep we can get with twenty million dollars and see how much we can get done off of this. And another big thing, I'm sorry, I do add along, it's all very important information. We have flow monitors in all these locations, so as we start to clean up, we know exactly what we're taking from flow on the receiving monitors, so that's very important to report back to the DEPs as these projects get flushed into the groundwater.
Let's go to the gentleman in the back there.
Yeah, thank you very much. All of us, I can't see it, but I, and all of us are trying in on the area, but realizing it would be a clear separation. Is the lateral line that goes along the boulevards, that goes west of the Alfred Street, serves that whole area, as I understand it? I understand that that line is kind of out to capacity and needs to be revamped in years. Any of this, any of this, any of these groups address that issue?
No, that would be for some of the growth that's coming into the city. Does it go into locations that would affect some of these areas? Absolutely. Is that a key point that we would go to today to help with our consent agreement? I would say, looking at that, I would say no.
So you're gonna, you're gonna have to do that, do anything, you're gonna do it with low money, some kind of money?
I would say the city's very aware of what we have in the growth that we brought into the city.
You can go to, you can go to the street, like it's kind of hampering, I realized that. It looks like it's kind of hampering growth up there as well, same thing.
All I can tell you, this just comes forward between the department, that the development knows what hard construction can take going forward.
No, I think just to recap what was addressed there. In my mind, you and the new city manager coming in, kind of assessing what the issues are, I see that there are three issues. We obviously have the consent decree, this, this DEP requirement to, to separate the combined sewer situation. We also have aging infrastructure. We send rumors through our, our, our pipes underground, you'll see that they're collapsed, they have intrusion. You get all sorts of water intrusion, those have to be fixed. And then additionally, the issue regarding the capacity. We are, we are hitting our, our limits to the existing infrastructure that we have with sewer capacity. So we have to expand that if we do look to further develop the energy. So I think I agree, right? So thank you again for that question. And Ms. Jones, over here?
So the project that does downtown Main Street and Washington Street, I know there's a ton of businesses that are along that stretch. Do we know what sort of impact will have on our businesses?
Yeah, so as I've been, I've been with you people for 29 years and I've been, have the privilege to be the director for eight, I definitely have the feeling of how it is to run a business in Vittifer in downtown area. What's happened, how we got to the point where we're at now, is a lot of this is downtown work. I call it the low hanging fruit. We grabbed out all the low hanging fruit, we put all the new lines in. Now we're at the main trunk lines that go to the treatment plant. And that's why we're focused in the downtown area now. How's that gonna impact the businesses? We're gonna have town hall meetings like this, we're gonna meet a couple of times, we're gonna get all, you know, we'll take all, all the information in as we can and we'll just try to lay out the best game plan forward for the businesses to continue to try to thrive. The Allen Street project, we've hit that business pretty hard, we know that. But boy, didn't they belly up for us and they really worked hard with us as we worked hard with them. I would tell you, are they totally pleased? Probably not, but I, I think they understand now where we are and the reasons why we're there. And unfortunately, we're back there next year. We're gonna be back there July, August, September, with DOT doing the final payment side marks and the beautification, I call it, you know, the top layer. So they gotta relive all this again, not, not as in-depth as Craig and I are in the south, it's gotten bad. So they're gonna impact their businesses. I always get it to Alfred Street before DOT comes. That way, we don't have both companies going together. That's how I go, that's hoping we can do that. And the bond rating came up, so the bond ratings are playing their part for us.
So I apologize, this is our, our address, but as I recall, the, the council meeting where the hundred million dollar figure was given from the 2018 estimate. I would like to clarify on where exactly we are in the hundred million dollar spend, if you will. You know, obviously, things have gotten more complex since 2018, you're aware, everyone here is aware, you all feel it. So, you know, as a dollar or percentage, where are we in that original quote of a hundred million dollar estimate?
So as, not being a life driver, you try to go by it down or not tomorrow, or maybe go the following week, you don't even know what it's gonna be. So that we know where we are with the hundred million dollar range. I count myself, I'm not looking at it as a hundred million dollars today, I'm looking at it as twenty million. And I know it's a big figure that we need to know. I look at it as, hey, we know we have twenty million dollars in the pocket, how can we get the biggest thing for the city and get the projects done? Yeah, we gotta look at the full projects in the outlay and we do have price tags on all the projects. Today, I would think it's a hundred million dollars. I don't believe this is twenty million dollars. But that's me sitting here saying, knowing that the problem, knowing what we're capable of doing, and I haven't had the opportunity, about for 10 minutes, maybe, sit with the boss and really go through how she might feel the best way for us to approach this as a team. You know, there's ideas that we have out here that we gotta throw around and I'm gonna try to throw around and see if I can get the body. And if not, then hey, we tried, it wasn't a good suggestion that we brought forward, we'll move on. But we will work hard to get the best we can and try to keep, you know, give the best work that we can.
And, you know, if you could just give me a second to, to address that as well, since Director DeMaurice mentioned sort of how he would be sitting with me, he would talk through the different projects. I just wanted to share with you my, my order of magnitude when it comes to priority. I think it's really important for us to focus on dollars that impact the most people. And so looking at areas that are highly traveled, lines that would affect the most developments and the most properties, we would do that kind of assessment, of course, putting health and safety always first and foremost. And then, of course, if there is a synergy between that and other projects, if we can get some, you know, development to cover part of those cost surpluses and things like that, we would make sure that we combine those to look to see where our upfit thing is the biggest thing for our profits. So we're gonna have to do a prioritization of all these products since we move forward the next 10 years. Sorry.
Yeah, that's fine, thank you, that's helpful. I'm gonna restate the gentleman's question in a different way. Other than how much of this hundred million dollar spend is, are we, like, let's just talk about percentage of project hours or, or individual lineup, it's like, let's, let's talk per units and dogs. How far along are we? Are we 20%, 50%, 10%?
I would say we're at probably 60% if I had to really guess at it. To give you a true memo where we are today, that's a tough thing to do. How we developed these projects, what we did is we looked at the entire city, we looked at where the combined systems were. We went and looked at ledge, we looked at the number of basins. For DEP, it was getting the catch bases out. They wanted us to put holding tanks all over the city. Well, I wasn't going to do that at all. We really pounced on our chest hard, because I had a couple of meetings saying, no, that's not the right way to go. You better give us some time to put the flow readers in, let us get the, let us pinpoint where all the flow's coming from and let us go in that direction, please. That's how Craig came up with this map. This, this gets the most catch bases out, it gets rid of some of the worst infrastructure we have and allows us to make the DEP happy going forward. For us, that's very important. We need, we need that relationship we have with the DEP. I can tell you, we have a pretty good relationship with them today. But I, I feel as long as I'm here, we're gonna try to keep that relationship going. As we run both plants, 24 pump stations and collection system, you really need them to be like inside. So doesn't mean we have to agree with them. Doesn't mean we have to keep them, doesn't mean we have to agree with everything they say, which we did. I think the plan forward today is a really strong plan for the city of Vittiford, I think it's the biggest thing. That's a really tough question. I think after we've got these ten projects off our list, and we had the opportunity, which we got all. The council disapproved us to get our utility vehicle. That's gonna allow us to get ready for the next ten projects, really know what direction we need to go in, get some more flow readers on, get ready for our next stadium.
Thank you so much, Director Demers. For the sake of time, knowing that we only have an hour with you, we'd like to proceed with the next bond, Reverend. So at this time, I'd like to invite up our Director of Recreation.
How about the topics of recreation bond? So question two on this Reverend asked, donors to approve a six million dollar general allocation law to fund improvements to the city's recreation facilities. Eligible facilities, Clifford Park, Rotary Park, Shemel Park, Memorial Park, also known as Wakefield, Doran Field, St. Louis Field, the Villier, now the J. Richard Martin Kingsley Center, Westbrook Skating Rink, Vittiford Ice Arena, or a future skate park. So a yes vote would approve the bond, a no vote rejects the bond. Right now, the impact of recreation on our residents, just to give you an overview of what we do in the city and how the parks and facilities are impacted by that. We have about, we have an online system for people who register for any of our programs, rentals, et cetera. We have about six hundred and eight new households that have registered online, and that's for, there are a variety of services and programs that we've done. That's about a sixty, almost a sixty-five percent growth that we've seen just in the past year. Our total annual registrations are about four thousand, eighty-four percent of those registrations for, again, various programs, summer camp, after-school programs, rental space, baseball, basketball, soccer, et cetera. Is eighty-four percent of them. Three hundred, three thousand three hundred and seventy-seven are resident registrations, four hundred and ninety are first-time registrations, up twenty-five percent. The reason I wanted to show you this is to show that this community is growing, and our department is also growing. So we're seeing this tremendous growth just in the past year, and we will continue to do services like this to show you that we are growing. We're growing out of this building. Our facilities are also becoming older, and we prepare for all of this growth that is to come. Just wanted to give you one of the things that this city considered to be a future skate park. This is the one in South Portland, just using that as a reference or a guide. There's been a lot of talk about having a new skate park in the city. And if this bond is approved, a skate park is one of the things that would be considered. Shemel Park, right now, is in need of a complete top-to-bottom renovation. These pictures just show the erosion, the unevenness, a lot of the broken, uh, you know, things right there, I don't wanna say things, but... And it has really become a space that really, I would say, the city's not very proud of at this time, it only needs a facelift. We would love to see Shemel Park become a space where we can do some programming, like some music in the park, some family events, and et cetera. It really does need an uplift. Rotary Park, Rotary Park is about seventy-seven acres of South Main Street, and it is in need of many overdue projects, everything from replacing fencing at Marton Field for the backstop, upgrading our security measures, and around the bathrooms, which is down there on the beach. We would like to resurface Redmond Field for smoother play. This is a picture of Redmond Field on the bottom, and it's basically become almost like concrete. What we've seen, especially in that area over the park, is when we've had those big floods the past couple years, when people could kayak, they went in the hills. All of that, when they go down, when waters go down, it leaves all this debris there, and then it just becomes almost play-like. Redmond Field has been home for our Vittiford Youth Football Association, and it's really getting harder and harder for them to play on the safe surface. Up here in this corner, that's just an example of some of the siding that's falling off of our teen center, which is located in Rotary Park. It is in need of new siding, new windows, new trim, some interior upgrades as well. Trying to think, where are we at there? Install new backstop at Marton Field, we would like to install a security gate at the field, at the park, so that we can keep the park safe for people at night. We're seeing a lot of activity, especially down there at water at night, and we need to find a way to keep people safe from that. Relocate and expand the dock park for safer off-ice fun. We would like to add teapads and signage to our basketball courts. I did mention the teen center already, and erect a new gate at Rotary Beach, to enhance the access to the beach and... Mayfield Park, we're looking, the things that we would look at would be to resurface the tennis and basketball courts, which haven't been done in some time, and to organize the public restrooms so that they are comfortable and are A D A D. Clifford Park, we are looking to develop a forest management plan to preserve the natural areas there. We would like to upgrade trails, we want to introduce more wave finding, and we would like to resurface the basketball and tennis courts that have not been done in quite a few years. The St. Louis Fields Complex, these are the bathrooms, they're, they're currently not A D A compliant. And they are in need of a big overhaul. I've had somebody refer to them at one point as, it looks like a prison bathroom. So that was nice. But the biggest thing is accessibility, and they're really not fully accessible for the public. This is the outer fence of the St. Louis Fields Complex that wraps around all the way for Prospect Street, Down West Street, and Down Paul Street. So if you look in these pictures, you can see that they have deteriorated to a port, but they've become really unsafe. And they're not really fulfilling their use of trying to keep everything locked down from, from that. They have been long overdue for being replaced. Some of the other things that we would be looking to upgrade at St. Louis would be to build some new spec heater seating at field number one, of course, upgrade our public restrooms, add irrigation to the field one outfield for healthier turf, and some enhanced lighting for evening games and events. So we already have lighting at St. Louis Field, but what we don't have is a system in which we can just turn the lights on and off from the comfort of our phone. What we have to do is, now, we have to have staff on site to be able to turn them on and turn them off. So what we're doing is we're spending more money and staff time for something that can be done a longer easily. If we were able to have those upgrades. Vittiford Ice Rink, I really can't speak to this, but it'd be welcome to call up somebody to speak on that. I can give the list of what has been provided to us.
Hi, my name is Michel DeVeiller, I'm the general manager for the past four years of Vittiford Ice Arena. You know, it is a fifty-year-old building. You know, we're constantly, you know, right now, the way we work, my board of directors, stop on me to try to put a plan together. However, it's really tough to do a plan, because we're kind of half living on what's the next thing that's breaking. Pretty much the entire, since the beginning of the year, we're just changing motors on the Zamboni. This past weekend, we had to change, change the pedal on the Zamboni. This past summer, we had a company that helped us sell ice ops, which pressurized our system. So that's all the flooring, the piping that's under. Basically, they had to put a pause into it, the goal, the, the original goal was to actually find the leaks, repair the leaks, but there's so many leaks in the manifold, under the floors, and the glycol is coming up. So unfortunately, with that, what they did temporary is to put a ring sealant, which is something that, basically, you put into your radiator to slow down the leak. It's not proven, within a year, or two, or three, ultimately, we'll have to change the piping. And the reason why we kind of have to do our due diligence as a, as a ring manager is, now there's so many leaks that they can't really actually continue that. So now travelers insurance, which is insurance that I have in the city, we have to kind of pursue that, to end up changing the, the piping and the floor, which is approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to a million dollars, depending if we have to kind of replace the entire boards and the glass, which are boards and glass are still in good shape, but the floor itself is completely in need of repair. The one big thing that some of the people in the community have mentioned is the bleachers. The bleachers are the original bleachers, which were, they're fifty years old, and they were donated from another, another company, which I'm not aware of. So that's, you know, over the years, prior to me, we've had multiple proposals from Hussey Seating, which I do have a decent connection with the local company here. Jeff saw us here coming to take a look at it. There's multiple ways to go about the bleachers. You know, I don't wanna say exactly the number, obviously, cost of material has changed over the years. But we're looking at about, you know, close to half a million dollar, also based on some of the code enforcement things that are coming, which was, I think we're still on the two thousand and eighteen, according to the last person that came as far as code, drywall and, drywall or fire code and things like that, so kind of, you know, the goal would be to kind of, you know, have a different, a different way to do the bleachers, so it's all based on how, and you kind of, like I said, it's, you know, it's up to you how we would like to kind of do it efficiently, you know, for the people, and the people that are coming up the ring. And, you know, the last thing I briefly talked about at the beginning is, Zamboni is thirty years old plus. We put probably about sixty to seventy-five thousand dollars since the last four years, from changing the water tank, changing the cold water tank, hot water tank, few batteries, pretty much every single pipe in, on the Zamboni. And again, as of now, we're just kind of, I'm lucky to have a great assistant that actually can actually do the maintenance itself, because in the past, when I first started, I did not have him, and basically, we would call the only company that there is is in Massachusetts, and it would cost us about six hundred just for them to come up. So very lucky to have that, you know, over the years. And the collaboration from U N E as well, you know, first thing when we started this year, we were hopeful that the Zamboni was gonna run a hundred percent. On the first day, our motor actually broke down. Thanks to Leon Backman and you and the guys at U N E, we were able to go and borrow their, their backup motor, fix that, and then the kind of, the small things that we're dealing with, we had to order a new motor, and eight thousand dollars expense. So that's what we've done, we've done, and then this past weekend, we were just close from canceling pretty much a couple days, because the pedal ended up breaking. Again, luckily, my assistant is doing a great job, had the pedal in hand. We worked at it for about six hours, and then ended up not canceling really anything. The building itself too, you know, there's a lot more than just those three items. From the small things that, when it comes to doors in my office, to the roof, you know, I would like to, you know, eventually get an engineer that actually looks at everything, and, you know, the details of the entire building. But, you know, like I said, I think it's a huge benefit to, you know, helping the kids and keeping the people active. You know, in my, in my opinion, you know, being part of hockey in a long time, and being thrown away in tournaments, you know, that would be a huge opportunity to kind of build a multi, multi-sport, or, you know, multi, multi-purpose kind of facility, you know. There's just a lot of in and outs, you know, on basketball courts, to pick a ball, to tennis courts, and, you know, not just Ice Arena. But again, I'm not sure exactly what the, all the entire land that we have, but, you know, for now, basically, those three items are the major items that would probably add up to, you know, roughly one point five million.
So those numbers, I understand the rest, the total cost estimate? Or the amount you're asking from the city, and are those two numbers the same?
Honestly, I have not asked any numbers roughly. You know, I'm just trying to do my due diligence on what the floor, the floor expenses are. What we have from Ice Ops is roughly seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to a million dollar. The new Zamboni is two hundred and fifteen, they're twelve months to sixteen months. The original cost is twenty-five thousand dollars, and then thirty days when the Zamboni comes in. The bleachers, they're, I'm working on some different financial with Hussey Seating. Now they said that you can finance that, so, but also, you know, working with the city, there's, there's some rebates that are happening if we're working on that. Those are just estimations of the numbers, just for those three projects. The facade, you know, we, we just ask for small numbers. Since I've been on, on the arena, there's times where we've been asked for any. A year that we asked for a million, a year that we asked for fifty. At this point, we're just trying to inform the community about benefits of the ring, and, you know, what needs to be done, because it is a fifty-year-old building.
Okay.
So isn't the Ice Arena generating money on a regular basis with car sales, concession sales, and almost four hundred dollars an hour ice time?
Excuse me, say that again?
Ice time. It's almost four hundred dollars an hour, correct?
Uh, we're at three hundred and twenty.
So on a weekend, you're packed, teams playing, so it generates income? Is it not spending, it generates paramount income, three hundred dollars an hour for ice time?
Uh, yes, we, basically, the way, the way the ring works, is we work with contracted ice. We have about seven big tenants in our Vittiford Youth Hockey, the Hockey Academy. We've got T A, Vittiford High School, Men's League. Now we've got two new junior program, the Junior Mariners on the day ice. And we have our new junior program, the Connecticut Chiefs. Those revenue are about, our, our revenue, what we make at the ring is roughly about half a million dollars with all the, the ice rental, contracted ice. But again, you know, some of the things that we deal with. We just changed our boilers this past, four years ago, they were under warranty. Now they broke down because the city water actually kind of made corrosion. They were no longer under, under warranty, so that was a forty-two thousand dollars expense that we just have to deal with. Compressors also, the, the new rooms that we have, the pumps in there are older. Zamboni, like I said, two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Those are the constant expense that we've, that we've done over the years.
If I may, I just wanted to provide a little bit of clarification at this point. So for those of you who've been here longer than two months, please chime in if I get this thing correct. But my understanding is that the city owns the building that is the Ice Arena. And so it is our responsibility to maintain the facility itself, you know, beyond the business that exists in Ice Arena. And so this is just one of a number of facilities and properties and recreational facilities that we are identifying as possibilities that we could apply this billion-dollar bond to. I think it's important to note, and we have this in the materials that we handed out in the information that, that came to your mailbox. Obviously, there's a lot of need, as our Recreation Department Director identified, there's a lot of need and not enough money to go around. So the six million dollars will be there to potentially address many of these particular items, including potentially the Ice Arena. But we are committed to doing a public engagement process to allow all of you as residents to prioritize where that, those dollars will go. And so we can look at the highest priority facilities, recreational properties, to apply that money. So I just wanted to clarify that as well, hopefully that helps.
If I may just add something also, you know, our electricity bill are roughly between, you know, twenty thousand dollars a month.
Only pizzas? That's only on the compressor, right, at pizzas?
Correct, correct. You know, the things that we did is... You know, the things that we did for the ISO, to pressurize the system, that was a curveball of about $50,000. You know, and those are the things that we're just kind of, again, just doing our due diligence to make sure the building is safe for the youth and the community.
So in doing the diligence, I'm confused because you're saying $20,000. You're saying during season, so 20,000 times 12 months versus two months? It's a very different analysis, I would be able to say.
Sorry, are we at the end of the presentation? Because I think there are standing questions until the end. And I just want to make sure the recording is great because I have general questions not about the Ice Arena.
There are a few slides left.
Okay.
So perhaps you'll allow these specific questions and just allow Lisa to continue with the presentation. Of course, if we don't have enough time at the end of this, we'll all be available after we've answered any additional questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next slide here is the Westbrook Skating Rink. As you can see, there are some issues with the exterior of it and there are, I believe, are some drainage issues that need to be addressed. I think the next slide shows some of the interior stuff of the building itself, where you can see it has some building issues with the basement problem there. There's insulation issues, there's windows that need to be replaced. There's flooring that is a problem as well. So the exterior of Westbrook Skating Rink, old street dams collapsing. Without a functional dam, the flow of water can't be controlled and there will be no rain. The berms and the fill area are also becoming almost even. The dam and the berms would need to be rebuilt to ensure the long-term sustainability of the facility. And the interior, all recent improvements that have been made to the building were done with volunteer labor support from the Center for Technology and donations from local businesses. The roof has been redone to prevent water from coming in. And extensive work has been done to preserve the floor. Pressing needs with the building include insulation in the attic, glass and doors in the skating building to retain heat from the new heating system. That is approximately $20,000. Here's the J. Richard Martin Community Center. There's various different pictures that you'll see here of areas that are in need. Everything from rips in our roof, holes in our ceilings. There's much to be seen on that. Since we're kind of short on time, there is time for tours after this. I've encouraged you all to take a walk around with our staff. They would be happy to show you these areas themselves. But one of the biggest things that we're working on using the kind of heavy hitters here is we do have some existing core violations that we need to address to meet safety standards. We do need the Myrtle Street side parking lot in particular. The lady parked in there is in need of being repaved. There are also underground storage tanks that are underneath Myrtle Street that we need to be removed and move to go to a different heating system. We do not have very much security in this building at all. We have a badge system, we have very few cameras. And we do need to have upgrades for that to make sure this building is safe for all. We also have, for, some of you may have seen that we don't have any doors that automatically open for EVA access. So any of our exterior doors, the two on the side, of course, have stairs, but our handicap ramp doesn't even have an automatic door on it. So somebody using a wheelchair would have to wheel themselves up on a very long ramp and when they get there, they can't even open the door. So we look at that as a major need in order to become fully accessible. And also the installation of upgraded HVE system to replace our outdated boiler system, which last year, we had two boilers in the center. One of them completely shut down last year. Had to be replaced on an emergency town meeting, City Council vote right before Christmas. So that was kind of scary. We have one, the new boiler that we have has been told to last three to five years. And then the other boiler that we have, we are not sure how long it will last. Okay, I might ask Mr. Penny to help with some of this on the capital facilities, the capital need. So what we have so far is, I was going to speak a little bit to this and I can speak to this a little bit for this year, but because I only have three years in this job, I'm not sure I can speak to it. So, Mr. Penny, could you come up here and explain some of this? Thank you.
Good evening, thank you for attending. Obviously, for your questions. Every year, the city puts together a capital projects plan. You can see that plan, you know, that there's millions of dollars in need throughout the city. There's only a limited amount of money that's allocated towards capital projects. So the bottom line is every year it's going to have priorities. What is the greatest priority that the city faces? The money is directed towards that. And every year, from an infrastructure standpoint, the reality is that you fall behind. Because if you've got, say, $30 million worth of investments that are needed to keep the buildings up and you're funding it at $2 million a year, eventually, you're just dealing with priorities. You're dealing with solving the issues that are coming up that are in need. And that's basically where we are. It's, you know, it's just a function of planning.
This, the summary as far as recreation goes is number one, recreation drives people to purchase houses. It creates investment for people to want to go somewhere to live. People today tend to not go to places that don't have, can I send my kid here to play or there to play? Is there a beach to use? Are there football fields? Are there baseball fields to play for them in high school and middle school and stuff like that? Recreation is very, very important, okay? It can drive investment in dollars coming into the city to help offset it. When you take, my name is Mark Lesar. I'm a city councilor here, I've been doing this since 1993. Just as a high note. When you look at the budget that we have, to be able to afford all of the infrastructure and all the capital expenses that we would have to do, we would need like $20 million per year to be able to just try to catch up with that in the next 10 years. We are a service center city. That means we're one of 35 or 40 cities like Bitterford, Auburn, Lewiston, Portland, South Pauline, Bath, Brunswick, up and down the coast. We've got old infrastructure because this is where people used to live 100 years ago. And we put it all in the ground so it's very, very old. Recreation is the first place you cut. We're going to fund roads, we're going to fund staff. Staff is 81% of the budget. We're not cutting staff, we're not cutting police, we're not cutting fire. You know, you can't do that. So unfortunately, recreation is the first thing to go. We've got incredibly aged infrastructure and buildings here in the city of Bitterford that are falling apart. We just do, that's what it is. Can't help it. The Ice Arena could use $10 million to be able to do the things that they need. And they're looking to try to get $1 million just to put a Band-Aid on what they have. I'm a huge supporter of the recreation budget because again, I believe that it can drive investment by people coming here and wanting to live in a city that offers recreation for the children. So I would hope that it gets supported. I understand that it doesn't, okay? If it doesn't, but I would, we've delayed a lot of these projects long enough. We really have. And we've just reached that point where if these things don't get done, the loss of the skate park was just the poster child for what happens. 20 years of the skate park, it falls apart, you can't replace it. There'll be other things that just fall apart. The Ice Arena could be next. Westbrook Skating Rink is not far. Those berms and that dam are ready to go. They need some help to keep that going. And right now, Westbrook Skating Rink stays open through volunteers. It's not the city that's doing that, it's volunteers.
Mark, can you do that in the question?
Yeah, I just, I, I want, thank you. I want to summarize that piece on recreation as far as where this money is going.
So this bond is a $6 million bond with the estimated interest, Jerry, I can do this. At 4.5%, brings it up to about $8.87,700,000. The estimated average annual payment over 20 years is $435,000. And the estimated mill rate impact is .0975 on the low rate. Which I believe on an average house estimated at $382,000 was about $80 a year? No, $37 a year? Something like that.
Thirty-seven.
I compared it to, it was less than the gym membership. So I know that with all the other taxes that people have been incurring in Bitterford, that's really probably not something we should make light of. But just in comparison, it's about $37 a year for this bond. So if we don't approve this bond, if the city chooses not to, we will continue to seek grants. Our department is really good at looking for grants. We're not always really good at getting them, but we do have a lot that we go forward currently in consideration for a main trails program grant that our staff has put together. We are right now in the waiting period for that. We submitted it a few weeks ago. We'll find out by the end of the year. And if we do get considered for that, we could get up to about $200,000 for a Clifford Park improvement. So that would all go towards Clifford Park and all of the things that we want to do there, including the forest, forest management plan. Closures of facilities as they are deemed unsafe would be the next thing. And we are, as Mr. Lesar would say, we are at that point with some of our spaces that would need to be closed down because they are unsafe or they are going to be in such, they're going to break down to the point where they can't be used. I think of the Rotary Bath House with the septic that is way overdue for being replaced. And if that does go to the point where we cannot fix it, we would have to shut that bath house down, which would be really hard for that area and for all the people unlikely to enjoy the park in the summertime. I'll take this slide. So for a median single-family home, which is valued at $382,500, if both bonds were approved, about $147 of median single-family homeowner's annual property tax payment would fund these projects over the 20-year lifetime of the bond, making the annual low rate impact of both bonds .38 cents. Now it's time for questions. So please let us know if you have any. And please list who your questions are for.
And I know we are, we're timed. So if you do need to leave, please feel free to do so. We will spend maybe about 50 minutes on questions before we do the tour. So we'll go ahead and start with you, sir.
So there's a question in two parts. One, the Rotary Park, you will partner with the community garden there? Not that any of these projects impinge on that space, is that correct?
It's not in my, you know, we have not even done the, there would be no impact to my knowledge of the community garden.
And the others, I guess more about comment. It was kind of helped by you using the word "consider" when you gave the statement. I really hope that that's a very strong part of it.
So to speak to that, I just wanted to reemphasize what the city managers said is that all of these projects are up for consideration. And if the bond does pass, it would be up to the community engagement we see and what the council at that time would decide. So we would be looking for community engagement. We're not making any decisions on where that money is going to go tonight. That would follow. The Skate Park is part of that conversation.
The engagement would include meetings like this?
Absolutely, yeah. We'll find all sorts of avenues, including online surveys and town hall meetings and others. Any other questions?
So the bond that we're being asked to fund is $6 million. There are clearly quite a lot more than $6 million worth of projects to do. And I understand that that would be decided later. How did the department arrive after $6 million figure? And would that be spent in the coming year? Is that money for like one year? Or would it be spent over more time than that?
Okay, so I'll try to answer that in two parts. I believe this $6 million scheme from the Capital Projects Committee was the estimate that they came up with when they were determining what the needs were in the city for recreation facilities. And I know Liam is here tonight who was on that. Maybe I don't know if he wants to speak to that or not, but it's that pretty much.
We were looking at a reasonable number of projects that had been on the backlog. For the two years I've been on the Capital Projects Committee and the four years looking at, been on the council to try and fund some of those projects. And $6 million was a number that would have allowed us potentially, if it's approved, to fund several of those projects.
The second part of your question is, if this gets approved, I believe you have five years to work on these projects.
It's a twenty-year bond, but yeah.
It's a twenty-year bond, but we would make the bond.
The projects are on the five-year CIP. So those are the projects we identified that over the course of the next five years we will try to happen. Any additional questions? Yes.
Has the city looked at any unused properties that they could sell off to help offset the $20 million and the $6 million just sitting there? For example, we have two court houses, one is obviously on Washington Street, that we could sell off to developers. The whole Kennedy School complex, crush it, sell it. Why aren't we selling off property that could generate income? Number one. And number two, does this community center charge rent to anybody? Or is everybody using the building for free to help offset these costs?
Sure, I'm happy to take the first question. Obviously, selling property is a policy decision by your council. And so depending on the property, if that is an area to gain some revenue, to offset some of these costs, I think all of things are on the table for funding our future needs. So that could be something that we would look at. Obviously, working in conjunction with the council on that.
They have all these buildings, do they charge rent to anybody to help offset its costs?
So this building is going to the Recreation Department, where we have our programs and our offices. But we also have six other user groups who have space here. They do not pay rent. They are on a yearly lease. And those leases due end December 31st.
So if there were a Plan B if these bonds don't get passed, how do you generate some money?
Well, like you said, I mean, we would look for grants to cover some of the money. And the other thing is, there would be facilities that may not be easy to use until we can find that money because of safety issues.
So regarding the ice rink in particular, I think I am more concerned now than I did before, having heard more about it. You know, if we're making, the ice rink is netting $500,000 per year. How is that money getting earned? I don't really understand how that's not meeting the minimum needs of the ice rink facility, which again, the city does own. But it seems like that relationship is just, that's not working out. If the city is going to foot the bill for everything within the facility, what are we getting out of it? And second, I do understand the Mariners are looking at a practice facility. They're considering building a brand-new one in Scarborough. I'm curious if anybody has reached out to them to see whether they would like to make an investment in an existing facility that I understand that they used to play at. I think that could be a good opportunity for maybe a outside bond.
And I am not able to speak to those, I apologize.
We have met actually with Dexter Fong this summer about it. I just spoke with Marty a little bit. Apparently, it's not 100% sure that it's going to happen in Scarborough. So there is still some potential. We've run through the entire building with that entire group of the main Mariners. Or, yeah, like I said, this summer. And yes, that would be a ideal scenario if you ask me to kind of just, what they want to do is to build a two-sheet facility. a state-of-the-art facility that it can be opened 12 months out of the year. That would be an ideal scenario. We obviously have to look into the land space. Those are the details that they have. NYU was refixed by Tim Hebert Construction Company. Kind of, we met with them. So it was a meeting between actually people's choice that really want to get invested into the arena, the city of Bitterford, and the group of the main Mariners. So we're very hopeful that maybe we'll be able to work something with them in the future. We're working on that on a daily basis.
Oh, you're right, thank you.
And we'll just take one more question for now, sir.
I'm just curious, this is a real point. We're the ones that was done a quarter years ago. Did that mean they put on this study? And if not, we still have the PDFs and all the paperwork because it was part of, it's called the old point report. It was done in all the city buildings and infrastructures and upgrades and all this stuff. And it labeled out what we should be doing in five years, 10 years, 20 years, 50 years. And every year, I would add to that. But I'm wondering if that, if somebody had a chance to look at that and add that to what you guys did.
I have looked at that, Jerry, and I think that some of that has been added to this. But then, over the past few years, two other issues have come up in the buildings as well. And a lot of it is, as you know, is, you know, we feel like we take one step forward and that we take three steps back because we have it broken down and we're trying to fix something. At least with this building, that's the point.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. If you did get your question, if you'd like to email afterwards, staff will be available for a few minutes. But these at her staff will be preparing to, you can follow the signs to do the tour as well.
Anyone who'd like to do a tour with our creation staff is in the bathroom. They have signs. You can meet them here at the front of the room. And they'll take you anywhere on the park.